I like the idea of, you know, down the road, if we change anything, you could do six and six.
Just a thought.
I like.
The Borough Council work session to order. I see the agenda has a roll call. We're usually only do that for going to vote. We don't know if we're going to vote or not. So why don't we go ahead and do it just in case?
Brock. Alonso. Bowser.
President.
Ford. Harry. Kratzza.
President.
Lancaster.
Yeah.
Noel. Smith. Steelman.
Yeah.
Taylor.
President.
Warnock.
Yeah.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Executive session, Nicole.
And then to the agenda, the thing we talked about, did we?
Too. I was gonna mention, I was gonna mention ARP in my report, so you can.
Or something about there.
Added.
All right. Public comment. I don't see any public, so probably no public comment.
A public comment? Is that, is that a?
Is a public thing?
Okay. Sure.
Something I was brainstorming about, and when I read it, you understand why. But it's just from the experiences I had back in Borough Council before, and what I've experienced here as mayor. The town council was made up of six members and the presiding officer is the mayor. The terms of the mayor and council members are four years with three elected every two years. It's generally felt that this form of government is superior in a number of respects to that provided for the boroughs. Council members are elected at large and they feel that they are serving the entire municipality rather than giving undue attention to the special interests of the ward that elected them. The mayor, who is president of the council, presides at all meetings. Furthermore, being a member, the mayor participates in all discussions and has a vote on all questions, but does not have a veto. All these provisions differ from the Borough Code. Now, I bring that up because, you know, I just think that in the future, this doesn't have to do with me so much.
This is Bloomberg.
This is Bloomberg. Yeah. So, yeah. But I just think that it's easy for some, you know, like a mayor's position to be kind of lackadaisical rather than engaging. And I think this would engage that person. And I'm not worried about myself. I'm just saying in the future. And that's why I thought six members and the mayor is kind of a neat idea, reading it. And I just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah.
Pertinent to what's next on the agenda, which is the discussion of municipal reapportionment.
And on, on that specific, on Bloomberg, there was Carlisle Borough, and there was a number of other boroughs, I think at least three that we looked at that had that same system. They use a home rule charter. And I know we kind of roughly discussed Home Rule Charter. That's a bigger, bigger fish to fry, and it includes a voter referendum. But that was one aspect of it that they did like is that they are more engaged. They, some of them are ward systems and then the mayor is at large. So it was interesting. I really liked it.
Brought up in the, oh gosh, snap, not snap. The stamp, thank you. You also brought up.
Yes.
All right. Okay, we met on August ninth. The reapportionment committee met. We were all able to attend, which was great. And we looked over the three ward option, the two ward option, and the at-large option a little more closely. Because there was some concerns that we had had prior to our last discussion about the three ward option. And in the middle of our discussion, those, some of that kind of got lost. So we decided to do a little deeper dive on things. So I'll talk about that. But first, let's go through the survey results. So these are results as of the 12th. There hasn't been significant, maybe one more, Kyle? Okay, one, one additional result. So this is what they are right now. This is who participated. Just an FYI. Majority are borough residents. And with about 10% outside of the borough. 143 participated overall, which does seem small, but it's actually quite large for a survey like this compared to our ARP survey. This is larger. So we have a split on the residents who feel that they want an at-large system and they want a ward system. Now, the wards are split pretty evenly between a two ward and a three ward. But it is clear that half would like an at-large system and half are comfortable with the ward system. So here what they, here's what the numbers are. So got 50% at-large, 71 respondents, 28% for a two-ward map, 39 people voted for two. And then the three-ward map is about 23% and 32 voted for that. Residents want a smaller council. They want to reduce the size. 93% would like a smaller council. 7% would like to keep it the same. So here's the breakdown. Most people chose seven. But then there's some at six, some at eight, nine, and then it shrinks down. There's some 11 would like to stay at 12. But it seems pretty straightforward that most folks would like us to shrink the size of council from 12 down to a smaller number, seven being ideal. So here's our at-large proposal. This is our total population. An at-large map is just one ward. We do not have wards. We all vote for the same individuals. It's supported by 50% of the respondents. No future redistricting is needed, and seven members are required by law. Here's our zoning map again. And this comes into play when we looked at our maps in a little more detail. There's a map against the wall there, too, if you want to refer to it. So what I did was 22% supported the three-ward map. It's east, central, and west for those who need a, need to remember this. So it's two in the, in the west ward, two in the east ward, four in the central ward. Now, I wanted to break this down because there was some concerns. When you look at our zoning map, that the way that the lines are drawn, it does divide the residents up in a way that has some, we felt some disadvantages for future, future councils. So here's the west ward, and you can see that 63% live in a residential neighborhood. Now, the majority of council members generally live in residential neighborhoods. So we have 63% are living in a residential area, and we have 29% live in public or university-related areas, and then about 8% live in the commercial districts. Now, we look at the central ward, only 19% of the residents in the central ward live in the residential area, so the R1 and R2. Mixed use is 28%, and those are the houses like around campus, majority is student housing. And then the university itself is included in the central ward, and that we have almost 4,000 students. It is 47%. And then 6% commercial. So here we see we have doubled the number of population, but actually fewer residents living in the central ward. And then here we have the east ward. The east ward is 93% live in residential neighborhoods. And 7% live in commercial, like above buildings, above like businesses in the commercial zone. Does anyone have any questions about these?
There's an interesting thing about our zoning map is that, and I appreciate the breakdown, that zoning map isn't the actual map. It's the, what's, the actual usage, there's a lot of variances across the borough. And it's not, it's not particularly relevant right now, but to just to recognize that there's a very different map of the actual usage. And so, you know, it's.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, when we, I appreciate the breakdown. When we say residential, it means, means originally zoned residential, because there's a lot, a lot of, there's a lot of variances.
Yeah, and R2 and R3 do allow for duplexes, multiple families. So when you're looking at R2, those are often student housing, too, especially when it's right near campus. So here's what it looks like on this graph. You can see the actual number of those in residential zones is half, not only percentage-wise, but in actual numbers. So we felt that there was some structural disadvantages with the third ward proposal as it stands. It can, the central ward contains a majority of the student population on and off campus, so that skews the total population, and then it requires us to provide them with four representatives. However, the majority of council members and municipal election voters reside in mostly residential zones. The central ward has the fewest number of residents living in these zones, both as a percentage and real numbers. However, they'll end up holding the majority of seats on council. Because of all this and, and our discussions, the committee unanimously decided to withdraw its recommendation for the third ward, the three-ward option. Does anyone have any questions about our thoughts on the three-ward option? Any more discussion on that? Does anyone from the committee want to say anything about three wards?
I, there was nobody at the committee meeting who.
No, it was, it was total agreement. All right.
Gerald, what you brought up was brought up. I mean, but we're only working with, unless you want to pause and redo, which we don't have time for, right? You redo the whole zoning map and go door-to-door and ask who's there, and yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked, especially in the west ward, there's some even R1 zones right around campus that are, it's completely student housing. So it's, it's difficult using zoning map. That's just the best tool we had. So this is back to the two-ward proposal. On this two-ward, if you look at the zoning map, you'll see that we split the student housing. So this area in here, this is a few thousand students, and that's most of our mixed use goes to that side, to the east side.
That dividing line you pointed, is that Pratt?
Yeah, it's Pratt.
Point again.
So this is, this big block here, this is actual campus. And then over here, we have mostly mixed use right along here, and it's student housing. Now, when you click on some of these boxes, it's like 800, 1,000. So that's why it's when we're, we're dividing this up. Some of these, you know, you could have maybe seven people in the census here, but thousands right here. And so that's, that's why we end up getting even numbers. Because of the, the student population is really focused here. Okay, so 28% survey respondents supported this. It's divided in east and west wards. They're evenly sized. There's, we recommend an eight-member council, which falls in line with what the majority of residents want, which is a smaller council. However, it allows us to have four in each ward. The benefits of it, we felt it was a good compromise between those who wanted at-large and those who wanted to maintain wards. I know this is the fewest wards you could possibly make. But with a large student population, it's very difficult to draw wards, which is why, when we talk to these other boroughs, most were at-large because of that same problem. And those who had wards, some of those didn't have colleges in the borough. They may have had students living there, but the college was located outside of the borough, so they didn't have to factor it in. We felt unanimously that we would recommend the adoption of a two-ward map. We felt it was a good compromise. And we want to go with eight council members, four in each ward. So that's, that's basically it. We felt we could come up with a recommendation. A number of us still like at-large, but we feel comfortable with this two-ward option.
Picky question with the two-ward map. At the north, the north-central section of it, there's a little panhandle of green. Okay. Yeah, because it might balance the numbers even better, and it would be not a weird sort of panhandle.
Yeah, this, there's some blocks when you click, it clicks like a whole section. So this can be sliced out. Also, we have to think about if they do any sort of changes to that development. We're gonna lose some numbers here, however, because we're already smaller, it may end up being okay. A good rule of thumb is 10% population difference between wards.
So the actual, if we go this route, the actual ward will break at, is that?
This is Seventh Street down to Philly, and then it shoots over to Eighth, runs down basically through campus and then Pratt. Yeah, it's pretty clean.
Pretty much covers what Ward 1 and, 1 and 2 and 3 and 4, the dividing line.
It's, it's very close. Yeah. The only thing we're missing is this section here, which is a large student body there. But this is the same dividing line, that Seventh Street, the same dividing line, so people will feel comfortable with that.
Handle idea, which obviously makes it all look a little funny, but they were talking about, just as a reminder, the, oh gosh, the carriage house, about tearing it down. And I think it was a, it's like a 400-person swing, if that does not become a place where people live. I mean, I don't know what the plan is to turn it into, is what I'm getting at. So if it's a business or something like that.
Seniors don't hold me to that, but that's the rumor I'm hearing.
And some of the population will come back, but if it's, it'll still be less, so.
Advocate, just from a, from a purely, from a cleanliness, simplicity perspective, that north of Philly, we just use Seventh as the dividing line.
Yeah.
And the panhandle, and let, let, let the carriage house fall where the carriage house falls in the future.
That, that little strip at the very top, that's just, it's a function of like the map software was not letting us pick. But when we write up the ordinance, obviously don't include that little section. But the others, I think, are good. And there's also one, also one other little funky part.
Yeah.
When this, when we selected the section that selected as well. So we don't have to include that.
Do you know what that is?
That might bounce.
I'm trying to.
Well, this right here, this is the intersection with Sheets, and so I think this is Locust. I had it on the old.
That's Pizza Hut. That's a house, right? At least that one is a house.
And the first presentation I wrote down, the actual streets.
Yeah.
Right there, that's a house.
I think, yeah, because Locust is here.
That's where, what's her name that no one could find left?
But those two little sections would have to be adjusted on when we make the ordinance.
This is a dorm, and I think, and one of them is an apartment. Both are dorms.
And then next to.
Pizza Hut's on Oakland. It's not on Oakland here.
Oh, Pizza Hut.
Right.
And I believe then it's like a, like a, like a tanning place or whatever, or a haircut place.
I, I think they're just.
Tanning salon, and now it's a.
There is, there's student housing.
This is houses.
Yeah.
And this is probably the co-op area in here.
Okay, I know exactly what you mean now. Thank you.
Yeah, because this is eight, if you go down eight, and this kind of comes in through the co-op right here.
And the name I should remember, and I can't name, is Pizza Hut. And then next one is another business, and then there's houses. I go to Pizza Hut every Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, if we were gonna adopt this tonight, we would not want to include that little thing in this year.
In the second board.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would continue in.
And that's what you're calling the west is one.
Yeah, so this would be west and east.
Okay, not one and two.
I mean, the county can do whatever they want with their places, but for us, it makes sense to do a directional. We have block parties, West Block Party.
People that responded wanted you to go with all in, no, no.
50% would like to go at-large and 50%.
When you talk about a moving target, which you're, which you're obviously talking about, because that's going to occur, once you've drawn the line, it's going to change. And I think the most important thing that we need to do is to serve the whole municipality and get away from just the small end of the neighborhoods. And actually say, this is what's best for the borough of Indiana. That's why I'm surprised that it's not going at-large. I mean, that's what I think would work. And most of the people that I've talked to like the idea that everybody's voting for the same people. That's come up in all the conversations I've had.
I think three of the committee members feel comfortable with that large. We were trying to come with a compromise, because I know there's a lot of individuals on council that like the idea of wards. And the benefit of the ward is that you don't end up with a neighborhood or like a big swing and, and chain, like, you know, how the school board can, the one issue, and you could swing the whole school board, you know, this way or that way. And there's a lot less consistency on the board. And that was the purpose of the wards. I think a number of individuals like the wards. So we felt this was a compromise, but I, I do agree that it makes sense to go at-large. I think all of us think ourselves as council members of the whole borough.
Remember when I was on council that we're in second ward, but in real life, they weren't, just because of those shifts. And that was way back when, and I think you're gonna see more of that with the university changing so much, that you're gonna have more shifts. I don't, I don't know, I'm just guessing, but I think the idea of focusing on the whole municipality is a big deal. To me, it is.
Question about, um, we won't actually look at the data as the shifts happen until 10 years and another census, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so even when kids say, well, now I'm not gonna live in Stevenson and I'm gonna live in Delaney, well, that's kind of close. Northern, on two opposite ends of the campus, it won't matter until 2030.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, every 10 years, we're supposed to be looking at this and changing the lines. What's that? Unless you go at-large and you don't have to worry about.
Right.
How the numbers change.
Right.
There may be a council that wants to go at-large, and they may vote at-large as well, so.
That's a little bit of an unfair way to describe it. If we wanted to do this in two years, we could. Or if we wanted to go back to, like, it's, you have to do it every 10 years. If people wanted to change their mind next month, they could.
We could go at-large, probably at any time. The wards are more based on.
Anytime.
The census, correct? Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. If we did change to an at-large system and then said in seven years, we'd like to now go back to wards, we wouldn't have that fresh data. We'd still be using 2020 data until 2030, right?
Yes.
I assume you would have to draw ward lines every 10 years with the census.
Right.
Okay, yeah, the at-large, I'm assuming you could go at any time, right?
At least look, we should be looking at the wards every 10 years with the census.
Correct.
Because, I mean, if 10% is realistically, if 10% is, is, is a good rule of thumb, as you say, then that's what, 700 people? We haven't, we don't see.
We have a lot of, I doubt we'll have to, it's one line, right? We're not making, we're not changing multiple lines.
And to its benefit, the borough has been stable for the last 20 years, and even before that was, hasn't declined by 700 people at any given point. And so I, you know, I would, I would argue for this, and simply that it's a sort of, you say it's a compromise, it's baby steps. If in five years, people were like, wow, the two worked fine, but maybe, you know, having, having one would be just the better. You can do it at that point, but you haven't completely gone to, 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 to one at-large in one fell swoop. It's sort of, it's a compromise, it's baby steps. And, and I, the idea of this having to swing this all the time, I don't, I'm not sure that's true, because we are a pretty stable population, so.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine any major changes.
I said, it is a possibility to the mayor's point that it could happen, but it does seem unlikely, given the latest round of data.
It's gonna be because of population on campus, so you might go from Pratt to Wayne, to back to Pratt, just to, to make that, that.
Since we're looking at two wards, those lines are not gonna change.
The lines will probably change in the area where there's more of a transient population.
When we were looking at the more wards, we're thinking, okay, well, you could have a situation where you could be rezoned out of your, your neighborhood or your ward every 10 years, if you live like near campus. And that's just, that's way too confusing.
Yeah.
A lot of the municipalities that have wards are physically larger, right? We're only, we're less than two square miles.
Did, uh, did your committee ever find out when the last time this happened? Is there any?
No. Maybe it's on like microfiche.
Longer than any of us.
Didn't make the change. We just looked at it and focused on at-large, but the argument came back as to how many people or how many on council. And I don't know back then whether or not that had that rule where at-large is seven, which is, is the way it is now. So it's been this way for a long time.
Have the, we didn't have the technology to get that.
Yeah, probably, yeah, a notebook.
Did they combine east and west of Vienna?
Was. Be a west fire department, and we grouped together in 1878, I can tell you that much. And I'll tell you where it was. It was right where the library is today. Picture that's in Ninth Street, Delhi, you can see the 19th Delhi, next to the old west fire station.
The YMCA was built after the merger.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Does anyone have any more questions or discussion related to this topic?
I know that about 50% wanted at-large, but approximately 50% still wanted wards as well. I think that is an important distinction. I know only 27 or however many wanted specifically two, but 50% of the 170 people did want a ward system of some kind.
Yeah, we, we felt it was pretty evenly split.
Why did they? None of them showed up to tell us. The point is that when someone comes to me and asks me about something going on, I don't say to them, well, what ward are you in? That doesn't even come up in conversation, because I would think decisions really dictate the municipality.
I think that's right. And I think that's what most folks think about it. But I think one of the reasons I like the idea of wards, and I think this is a good, a good compromise, is, is, is just a, it's sort of a, it's sort of a, um, a little bit of a cynical political reason, is that I, I think it wouldn't be hard to run the table for council at an at-large system for a long time. I think one street, you know, one neighborhood could get elected on council and just be on council for, for a very, very long time. I don't know if we necessarily get out of that with, with two wards, but we do a little bit.
When, when we were calling around and doing research, I talked to people in East Stroudsburg who still have a ward system, who said that Stroudsburg, their neighboring municipality, had gone to at-large, and I think five council members. And they pretty much were what you described. It took about five years, a couple of elections for the change to happen. But essentially, the Borough Council there, you could just about drop a tarpaulin over the houses they live in.
And that's what I think about, that's also my question of when was the last time we did this? We may not do this again for, maybe that's equal amount of time. And, you know, you have no idea what the, you know, what the future Indiana will be. So to have that.
I know that you don't ask people what ward they're in necessarily. My, I guess my question, why not? I mean, to some level, we're here for a reason. I mean, if people have questions about what's happening in their communities.
Well, I mean, to some level, we're here for a reason. I mean, if people have questions about what's happening in their communities, I, and I'm not telling them not to talk to you, don't get that, don't take it the wrong way, but it, we may, in theory, know more about our immediate vicinity, that someone who lives on the other side of town, or, you know, may not know, right? Like a church that moved in next to my house, you guys may not know about outside of Ward Three. You may, but you also may not. So one could make the point of drive traffic to the local represent, the more local representation because they may have more answers that you wouldn't necessarily have.
Live way at the top of the ward, the problem's way down at the bottom of the more, of ward a mile away. I think in only two wards, that argument sort of goes away cuz you can still be really far apart in the same ward.
A weaker argument, I will agree, but it is still less of a distance than the northeast to southwest. Which in theory could mean what you get at large.
They call me because they know I'm on council and they know me.
Which is totally fair, I get that.
Happen a lot. People from other wards give me a call.
To, to piggyback on what Luke said, one part of this map is that our, uh, stormwater, uh, like our streams are, we have Stony and White Run and Marsh Run, right? And they're, they're in the two different wards, and now they have, both have flooding problems. This allows for people that live with this flooding problem, which is a different stream, to also get some infrastructure, uh, money towards this side of town versus what a lot of the money is going towards Marsh Run, right? So, that is another, I mean, I guess, point to the, to the purpose of the two wards, especially how this is drawn as that one of our biggest infrastructure issues in this town and most of Pennsylvania is stormwater. And that could be the benefit of having two wards is that we're splitting the stormwater concerns.
To answer, uh, what you mentioned, Luke, uh, I don't think my answer would be any different if it was in one ward or another. And if there's an issue, I would go and look at it, and it takes me two minutes to get somewhere. I had this the other day. And I said, you know what, I'll check that out and get back to you. And I drove over, checked it out, and then I called the guy back. I didn't even think twice about, oh my god, that's in first ward. It just doesn't matter whenever people have an issue. The, if you would, for example, call Peter, Peter might have knowledge of that, that you wouldn't necessarily have had. That's all I'm getting at. And so had they reached out to some of the first ward members, they might have been able to get that answer. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with talking to the mayor, okay? Don't take that the wrong way. I'm just strictly saying if, you know.
And Luke, on that same note, if somebody said to me, hey, you know that Second Street Park? Yeah, kinda. You know what I mean? Because I don't go to that end all that often. Very truthfully said, but y'all in first, first ward? See, I'm not even sure. Probably no, you know what I mean? And where Luke and I were practically neighbors, and yeah, we know that stretch of Church Street, people are flying up and down, and we know the problems of that little section, you know, way better than y'all on that end, so.
You'd be interested enough to go and look and then make.
That's what I like about the size of this town and the size of our borough. It allows me to get to know all of them and actually care about them. Um, but, you know, I've never thought of, I'm third ward, I'm not gonna step over that line and, you know, see what's on the other side of Philly Street.
It's the land of milk and honey in fourth ward.
Is it? Is it like sweet up there? I'm not, I, I don't step foot in it.
There is a yellow.
All of our stormwater goes into third ward.
Into his basement.
Yeah, pretty much.
Pretty much. Heights, oh.
I guess I live as a bottoms then.
Whatever the at-large or at wards, you know, everyone does represent the community cuz you can't, you can't pass anything with one word only, right? You have to have some, some constituency across the, the, the entire borough within the council to get anything done. So, I mean, I get, I, I hear what you're saying, Mayor, and I, I appreciate your position, but I, I, I like this, it's a baby step. I think, you know, to go from twelve people for wards to six people or seven folk, seven people as required, and, and at-large, it just seems like a huge step. If we have, if we've been at four wards, potentially since the early twentieth century, if not the late nineteenth century. Um, because that, I mean, that, that, it could be that we, when they, when they founded the borough and combined east and west Indiana, that configuration is what they set. I don't know, but it's been, it's, it's been a while. I, I just, I like this as a baby step. Twenty thirty is a short time from now. Future people on the, sitting here in a much smaller group can Nicole will still be around to remember all this. I don't know. Mayor Hood, Mayor Hood had a good run. You guys, you got, there's, there's precedent for a long run there.
Is there any public comment on line? Okay, I know we, the committee wanted to have a second public comment, just in case we had people wanting to ask questions.
And now they know they have the opportunity.
Oh, my goodness.
And people come up to us and talk to us, and I sent a text reminding the people that told me, I'm like, get here tonight if you have any questions or concern, and obviously, and they're all borough residents and I don't know.
I mean, that's, I mean, I, I appreciate all the work that committee's done, the staff has done to get the word out, to survey out. I think it's great. Um, and I, I don't think anybody should be surprised at all at the responses, um, but that's why we do all the extra work to, to get those responses in, cuz we know, we know that's gonna happen. And so unless we do a lot of extra work to try to get responses and prioritize those responses, then we won't get up. So I appreciate all the work. Hundred thirty-eight's a good number. That's about the same number we had for the, uh, the bike survey.
Random thoughts to plant a seed. With four wards, doing individual ward, like, meetings, like, public meetings in each ward is kinda onerous cuz there's four of them. So we've always treated it as sort of an at-large, we have one public meeting. With two wards, you could hypothetically have two distinct public meetings that are specific to that ward and, you know, and, and perhaps, this, this problem you raise is been a problem for a while ago. Um, perhaps we could get better public input with a two-ward system, cuz we would be, you know, you have one at whatever they turn horseman into, and one at whatever Eisenhower becomes after the fire. Um, and you, you, you put him in the community, not in the basement of this building. We might actually get better input. And that's, that's a, that's a weak argument for this, it's just a, a thought.
Specifically referring to a different format, like, more like, uh, what are they called, town hall? Is that more what you mean?
Like, we have, or we have, we have public outreach meetings where, like, and they're usually down here, and there's, and Kyle makes great pictures and has easels and has cookies and stuff. Um, and, and it's, it's sparse. Um, but if you had, if you this is, this is not the time for this probably, but this, I just had the thought because of the public outreach.
The time, as long as I've been on the council.
Take the meaning to the people.
I mean, that's, that's the next fun step, is talking about how the committees would work. I think that's a really big question, and there's so many different options, and I think that'll be the next step, and we have a year and a half to deal with that. So, time. Does anyone have any more questions? I'll just shut this down. Good.
What's the, what's the process from here? I just reminded, we, we, we've talked about it here. We hopefully could, we could maybe vote as soon as that.
The ordinance to then go to add.
And then one with the reduction of council. Wanted you to?
Put that on as the motion on the agenda. I didn't think it was.
Agenda, but.
The committee meeting, we just.
And what we had said was, we weren't planning to vote on it tonight, but if somebody made a motion, if you, when somebody can always make a motion. If people agreed tonight.
For the, to draft an ordinance, and once we have the ordinance, then we'll advertise the ordinance. Yeah.
Right.
And then we might have a houseful.
Just draft the ordinance next month, it'll be in the paper. Here it is, council, looks like they're going with two now. I ju- I just think time, uh, I think I said it before, I think making this decision is, the, the longer we, we take is better. Longer means more transparency, and we are restructuring diamond. Want, wanted to say something, can say something, as long as we can hold out.
Drafting an ordinance does not mean.
Says that once we draft an ordinance, and, and it costs a lot of money. Once we draft an ordinance, we have, uh, once we advertise an ordinance, we've paid for that money to be ad, to advertise. And so if we wanna change that, um, the, you know, the, the, the decision ways, well, do we wanna pay more to advertise again or not? And I'm just suggesting, you know, we wait, we wait a couple of weeks, we wait till the, the September meeting. Um, we do it over a month, we, we, uh, we pass it in October, we even pass it in November. I don't know what the rush is, and I think we are benefited by slowing it down.
I don't think we're rushing at all. And we have very high public input. We're sitting in the room right now in the form of no one. Um, I don't know what the point of waiting another month, if people come, we did not come out of the committee planning to push a vote. It's if people were comfortable with it, and so if they're not, then that's fine also.
Motion, it gets tabled, it gets tabled, but I'd like to move for, to draw, ask our solicitor to draw up an ordinance for a two-ward map and eight members, four in each ward.
Second, we have a motion. Before the discussion of the motion. This is a motion to ask the solicitor to draw up the two enabling ordinances.
So, um, I'm gonna speak against the motion. Um, I think, uh, this, we are restructuring democracy. Um, I think, uh, transparency is really important in this case. Um, and time gives transparency. These last two months, a lot of folks aren't in town. I personally didn't even see the survey, and I'm looking for it. Um, I don't see what's wrong with waiting and voting in December. This is a, this is a vote that hasn't been taken maybe ever. Um, and so I don't know what's wrong with more transparency. Um, waiting is transparency, so. Yeah, I, 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 I would actually, can I make a move to table a motion? I'd like to move to table that motion, um, and take it up.
Is there a second to that motion?
We've been working on this for quite some time. We've been on the radio. We've had many discussions. We've had a survey.
What's wrong with, what's wrong with waiting?
What is, what is the benefit, what do you think we're going to gain? I think we have a significant trend. We don't agree. We don't, I believe that we, we've had a lot of transparency.
Done, done a great job.
Is there any, what else we'd like to speak either for or against tabling the motion?
I would agree that a lot of people have been out of town periodically over the last two months, but this conversation has been going on for significantly longer than that. Multiple meetings, multiple advertised meetings. So, I am against tabling.
Any other discussion of tabling the motion? This does not need a roll call, does it?
Unless, unless it's closed.
Okay. Favor of tabling the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Roll calls are free, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ron.
No.
Clauzal. The bouncer.
No.
Ford.
No. No.
Paul.
Yes.
Steelman. Or not.
Yeah.
Now we have the original motion. Which is a motion to Anything final? There's still time to change if anyone wants to.
Yeah.
All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ousted. Or she carries. Okay. That's the end of that. Next, we have, we're, we're not going to have an executive session committee reports, if there are any. Admin. Development. Third Thursday is this Thursday.
The Meet the Hawks event, so there'll be some UEP athletes and the band and some Greek life folks, as well as, I understand, a number of us, um, there, and so it should be a good event. And that's the, the, the big upcoming event, I believe.
Third Thursday. Was there a sign-up sheet that they missed, or are we all just showing up if we can?
Yeah, we'll have it tabled.
Sheet's still floating around that we could use.
Or the weekend, like, if we were gonna do the weekend. But since it's just third Thursday from five to seven, there was really no sign up, come if you can.
Public safety.
Nothing.
We meet on Thursday this week at seven o'clock.
Public works. Shade Tree.
Again, Thursday, we'll have a table set up with some, I think we're gonna plan on doing some maps of just the borough in general for now, and some, um, ordinances. Um, a flyer about ordinances. And then I do have, for Shade Tree, I do, we've been posting Shade Tree last month. We finally went, moved forward with that ARP funding. And so we did post this, and I'm gonna read what we posted, and we updated our Shade Tree letter. And if everybody comes in and applies for removal of a tree in the right of way, we do have this on the letter, but I'll read it. It says, Indiana borough is pleased to announce there are limited funds available for residents aiding in the cost involved in removing a hazardous tree within the borough right of way. Funding has been made available through the American Rescue Plan Act as a direct effect of the COVID nineteen pandemic. If you would like to be considered as a participant of the available funding, please contact the code enforcement department at seven two four four six five six five four three. We look forward to hearing from you. So that has been posted on our social media, it's been on our website, and it's now in part of the letter that goes out to anyone getting, um, a letter about a tree, hazardous tree in the right of way. So we have forty thousand dollars, um, to pay for, um, half of the cost of what the person would incur for a tree. And then in cases two, we'll take case by case if somebody is financially, they can't even afford that, we'll take case by case, um, on that if they, they need assistance paying for the full removal. So that.
That was so clear, even I understand what's going on there.
Yeah, so that's up and running.
Learning.
Um, this, I just wanna give an update on the second paving project, um, which is the Nixon Avenue, fourth through eleventh. If you remember, it was originally, um, put out for bid from Nixon Avenue, fourth to eleventh. Shirock from sixth to ninth, did I say that right, Peter? Um, but due to the bidding cost that came way overbid, we had to remove the Shirock from sixth to ninth, and we're just doing Nixon Avenue, fourth to eleventh. Um, I just, the update is, in September, they're gonna start with the ADA ramps, and then the first week of October that they'll pave Nixon Avenue from fourth to eleventh. And I think, Gerald, that was part, one of the, Nixon was on your concern, so. Yep, that is, um, hopefully will be done here. Like, that's the timeline for that. Um, part, I wanted to put, bring this up cuz a lot, parking will be on the admin agenda on next week. And I know there's been a lot of council members getting complaints on, um, parking on Philly Street from five to, um, five to seven, so So we're going to put that on the agenda, um, to discuss because we had to redo their ordinance, their ordinance was way out of date. So we're bringing the ordinance to admin. So I know a lot of you have been hearing complaints, so if you, our parking director will be there. And we can talk about that, whoever can make it, or if you have, if you can't make it and you want to let me know your concerns or that, um, before the meeting. Moving forward with the stamp, um, if you had a chance to review any of the recommendations and the ones that weren't here at the, um, the presentation, they do have some of the recommendations are trying, the consultants are trying to finalize the plan. We'll get the final plan, bring it to full council to adopt the plan. Again, I, I believe the next meeting, um, or did the DCD representative is going to try to be here for any questions? Because again, that plan being created opens up us for some opportunities for funding through DCD is the original, um, the reason why the, um, plan was created. The county EMA services, I was at the thing for the chief's, um, and I'm sure he'll talk about it in his report next month. But when I was there, the county, um, pulled me inside and reminded me that, um, the emergency operation plan needs updated. So they want to get together with white township, IUP and us and get us all in the same room and maybe come up with one emergency, um, operation plan. I guess over a year ago, it was started, but with the change in the white township supervisor and obviously the borough manager, things got pushed down. So we're going to probably do that next month.
What time do you kind of do manager too?
So everybody was, um, it kind of got pushed aside, so that they pulled me aside and asked if we can, um, get moving on that again. If anybody had a chance to work, look at our website, the video that, that a county sponsored, um, a video and we had it on there years ago. But if you have a chance to go on our website, there's a, a small clip of a video, just, um, Kyle was involved in it, he went around with the guy and took videos and pictures.
Plan to have a kind of a video shot, video, minute and a half, two minute video footage of like all the municipalities. And it's clear that there's supposed to be business sponsors around the video. So that's why it's like the video is not directly on our website. Yeah, it's the, it's the link, it still looks nice, but when you click it, it'll take you to a webpage that very clearly has a bunch of white borders around. And I think it's going to be full of sponsors from the county that are businesses. And so as Nicole said, there was a video fifteen years ago or so, when IRMC Park was first built. And, uh, it's an updated version of that, it has new B-roll footage, it has like the H3 plot, it has the trailhead, you know, solar, um, or not. Your house is on there because the solar, yeah, like, you know what I mean? It's a, it's an updated video. Very visibly not Indiana borough.
I were like, wait a minute.
It's there, but yeah, if you don't, it's, I think, if, if that video draws anybody to town, they'll instantly realize that that place does not exist and then they might just find it funny. But our COVID update still happens in the news section every Friday, so.
And the last thing I want to talk about is the ARP funding update budget. I know we've been talking, um, about that at the, the committee, um, meetings and everybody has been given the updated. And we added the new, the donation to the fire company, the, for the thirty five thousand, the purchase of a pickup truck. Some of the things that has been coming up about the ARP that in the committee meetings and moving forward was the sidewalk repair program. And I know that's in part of the active transportation plan that was just presented to us last night at community development. They actually had in there, um, some where the sidewalks were, you know, damaged or, or that needed repaired. So that brought us another question and Luke just happened to bring it up too about the sidewalk repair program. You know, what we want to move forward with that, any, um, suggestions? If we want to go ahead and definitely bring it to public works next week and maybe Luke has some thoughts, what you want to tell public works if you can't be there.
The, the basic premise of it was I was out on about on our sidewalks and I noticed them. And that made me think of it, quite frankly, I'm like, this sidewalk sucks, oh yeah. We're supposed to be doing something about that. And so that just made me ask the question, I didn't know if I missed it, except, I mean, it sounds like a public works domain, right? And so I didn't know where the status was, but it does raise in general, a bit of a larger question about the ARP funding in general. I mean, the longer we wait to authorize anything, the less the dollar is going to stretch with inflation the way it is. And so I don't know if there's a holdup with the sidewalks specifically. And if there is, how can I help? Because I mean, getting that, like the, the trees being authorized as of August first was simply delayed by people, right? By, by all of the associated parts, getting your heads together and getting it on paper, the money was there before that, right?
We only have, we still have not received the second half of the ARP too. We received half of it. Yeah.
Available, and I don't know if there was, was it an income based thing, was it a percentage based thing, was it a flat number based thing?
None of those projects were tied up in the fact that we don't have anyone to administer a program like that, that's that detailed where we're, we don't want to just give half the money for a sidewalk to somebody who could afford to pay for the whole sidewalk.
We're, we're left, it was trying to figure out how to do that and like, there is still a plan to have some capacity to do that. However, in hearing with the Shade Tree, the Shade Tree Commission letter, it could be as simple as that. You know, it could be as simple as we can kind of try to consider this on a, on a case by case basis.
Ask the question.
Lot smaller in even to take down than a side, I mean, a sidewalk compared to remove, yeah, and not as many trees.
Um, one would ask the question, how would you verify income?
And we've read that in different programs before, not run through the borough, but with a partnership with DI when they did the Elm Street project.
It's, it's not, it's not an in, income measure, but the assessed value of the house that the sidewalks going in front of. Because that's going to be at least roughly related to the income of the family that's living in the house.
I don't agree with that.
Roughly related.
If they over purchased their house, it could be completely house poor, that does not dictate the amount of money they have to spend on repairs in any real way.
Or if they purchased the house forty years ago, they own it and now they're old and poor.
Sure.
And we could take it up again at public works and try to get some answers to it. I don't think there's going to be a, there's no magic bullet that's going to exactly, uh, what we're going to go, what we're going to do is we're going to look around and see what programs have done. And we're going to probably echo that same sort of thing, whether it's assess value, protect, and, and there may be, there may be people that slip through the cracks.
Whatever it is, is still going to be helped for people, right? Yeah. Because the shade trees was more all encompassing, but it is on average, a smaller repair than having to tear up forty feet of sidewalk.
But I think we're getting a little closer now that the active transportation plan.
Yeah, yeah, that's what she told me, I mean, I literally.
They've identified, I think like fifteen different areas that are needing repair along certain routes that they're identifying as being advantageous in the future. So we'd probably be focusing on those.
Sure.
And use those as a guide, the same way the Shade Tree did with the letters that went out. It's not like everybody's getting their trees taken down, it's just the letters that went out.
Well, well, it actually, it did bring up another question, and again, I'm just throwing it out there because it may not be something someone else thought about, maybe it had. The trees that are damaging the sidewalks may not have been on the shade trees, cut these down letters. And so, because I brought that up in the call as well, the, the ones, and then, and, and actually another problem, potential problem, and now it's relatively small, big picture, is the, like, the two blocks of Church Street. Is it even two full blocks? I have a black top side, fuck.
Yeah.
And so my sidewalk is okay, but my neighbors across the street is not, and it is being damaged by the tree that looks otherwise healthy. So it may not have made it on the gotta go list, but it is screwing up their sidewalk. And then if we try to tell them they got to do the sidewalk.
Right.
Now they got to take down their tree, right? And so I, I like the case by case clause in there if someone was, and then it may, okay, maybe they had plenty of money to do one of them, but now they got to do both. You know, so just put it out there as a potential challenge for some people, because.
It's because they're lifting a sidewalk, do we?
If you're going to make someone repair their sidewalk.
Because of a tree root?
That has come up, it's actually coming up.
How the, the tree works, but it's not like, if the tree is lifting the sidewalk, we're not, our automatic is not that you got to cut the tree down, okay?
That the gentleman fixed his sidewalk once already and it's hasn't, and it's already, the tree is definitely.
Enough to break a sidewalk, it's a significant part of the tree and you are more than likely going to significantly damage that tree. So doing one without the plan of doing the other is, for lack of a better way to phrase it, like filling up three of your tires with air and leaving the other one flat, right? You're going to have a problem.
Sidewalks, we got sidewalks that have, that are gravel, we got sidewalks that are, you know, impassable. So, you know, a slightly lifted sidewalk is like, it's not, it's not my first thing to worry about when we talk, start talking about divvying up funds or, or that kind of stuff. And that, and that's why I was just, that's, that's a clarification I wanted to make.
There's neglecting this property, so he's going to come in and we're going to give him the funds to fix a bunch of properties, but then there's somebody across the street who owns their own home and they didn't get in on it. Like there was some issues with like some homes that were nice, big homes and the sidewalks are bad and they're not repairing it. And then we're going to give them half their money and make it afford, you know?
But when we went with looking at, at some of these, we looked at in terms of like, inhabit Indiana and these are different programs. At a certain point, we sort of settled on, it's better for the community to get some, get things just sorted. And if we, if we get, you know, if someone gets a good deal and it's, that's still, the sidewalk still gets fixed in this case, right? Like, you know, so if we can, if we can come up a way that, that makes it harder for people to take, to take over advantage of us, great. But I wouldn't let, I wouldn't let perfect be the enemy of good in this case. Like it's better that, you know, the person in the, in the wheelchair can actually, doesn't have to go around that block than it is to like stick it to a landlord who otherwise is negligent, right? And so that's just.
Money, so I know we're looking at like a handful of sidewalks. Be like doing.
Sidewalk pads, if not the whole sidewalk in front of a house, it's like, we'll be fixing one area of their sidewalk.
Depends on what gets landed on the goal, is the goal to put a new sidewalk, is the goal to fix broken sidewalks, is the goal to, you know, what is the main focus, right?
A very short amount of time, because I don't think that our, the line item for sidewalks was.
A hundred thousand, yeah, but, yeah.
But into the reality, right?
Be a good thing, it's not that much money out of this large pool, just pick, pick, pick a plan, run a plan and we'll see how it goes.
One could use, or you could fix a couple of people's sidewalks, so. This is where I'm at. Yeah.
Money and moving it around terribly, unless we want to reopen this whole Pandora's box, like we, we said sidewalks, so let's.
It is contingent on figuring out how we're going to run this program and who's going to run the program.
Just run the program, fix some sidewalks and then if it's, if it's great and we want to do more of it, we figured out how to do that and we learned from this. But I guess I wouldn't, I, I tend to agree with Luke on this, like admiring the problem doesn't solve the problem. I'd like us to like, just, I like, just check things off.
I just, I would get a hundred thousand dollars and think I'd rather have a park than a couple sidewalks. But we voted on some recreation.
We voted on this though, like you can't just decide, like, we, we, we took a vote on it, if you want to do another vote, we can do a different vote.
By the next council meeting, I might have some good news about an economic development person. So with that being said, um, we can maybe then definitely move forward with some of these. Ending, so.
I don't mean it, like I'm in the construction world, we're running out of time this season for this to happen for folks. And I know that a lot of people are putting escalation, escalation clauses in contracts. So basically, I'm just going to pick a random number, five hundred dollars worth of help in the spring may only be four hundred and fifty dollars worth of help. So the longer it takes to execute a program does then create the potential for unable to get it done.
Getting this season is feasible, because I know we're waiting on their academic development person to because it won't be run based on who, like us deciding who gets the sidewalk.
No.
We already have a process, an application process and, you know, they're filling out the permit.
And I apologize, I'm just saying, if it was, hey, apply for this and you would get five hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars or a thousand dollars. And that's it. Program run, I mean, what's the, what's the problem?
Run the program, because we're not going to run the program through the committee.
But it's, it's code, that's what it is for Shade Tree, they check a box and get help.
Have a process.
We're still with the sidewalks, we're, we're not sure what to do, yeah.
Missing that part, I got you.
Yeah, we don't have a process for them to apply for funding.
Because.
Created in about ten minutes at a Shade Tree committee meeting, we're going to add it to the letter they get and they can check a box if they want help. Process created, that's all it was.
The sidewalk is a little bit more.
It may be lens, I'm just saying, if it ends up being a number, because.
Some trees that need repaired.
Expensive is what I'm trying to say.
I suggest that this discussion could happen at the public works. Not on public works, who's, who feels invested in it, please show up at the public works meeting.
Well, that's all I have for my report.
Name that his son is involved with, so he will not be giving a report tonight.
The Pearly League World Series, very cool.
Can I ask the police committee people, maybe they have an answer to a question? You're going too fast thing on Church Street, that, that tells you you're going too fast in, in disagreement with the speed limit sign that's right near it. So I'm just curious. At least thing, I didn't know if it came up or someone was complaining about speeding on Church Street.
Lights. Those, those record numbers.
Wrong speed limit.
As a traffic study, aren't they?
I think so. Speeders, it is blinking at you and telling you you're speeding in contrast to the speed limit sign that is near.
Yeah.
So if you're going twenty five miles an hour down the road, you are going to be posted speed limit and it will tell you you are speeding. So if it's a traffic study, it is.
Chief and you'll have somebody take a look at it.
It's still up there.
I, I, it was the last time I paid attention.
I didn't see it today, but.
It was an invalid traffic study if it is supposed to be measuring the speed limit.
Twenty five, it says you're speeding.
Is posted twenty five, so if it's simply to measure speeders, of which there are many on that street, it will not give you accurate data.
The actual.
That would be more helpful then, okay, sure.
Okay.
I have nothing to add tonight, obviously you've given me some more work to do.
Yes. Alright, my report. So all those involved on an, on an excellent Italian festival this past Sunday. These events are a large part of what makes Indiana a pleasant town to live in. Last couple of weeks, I've attended a few meetings of interest to the council that haven't been mentioned already this evening. Or first one was briefly alluded to, the first of these dealt with the active transportation plan. We're developing with the help of a team of consultants paid for by a Walk Works grant. Or first one was briefly alluded to, the first of these, don't we, active transportation plan, we're developing with the help of a team of consultants paid for by a Walk Works grant. Those unfamiliar with the jargon, active transportation is a, is planner speak for getting around with muscle power, i.e. walking and biking. Though for some reason, it seems to also include riding a bus. Reviewed the plan last night, and council will be caught upon to approve it next month, which is the deadline imposed by the grant. This grant was also awarded to the county and White Township. The county's plan looks very much like ours, though obviously covering a lot more territory. White Township is developing a complete streets policy, which will be tied into the other two plans. Next, I, along with a couple of other council members and borough staff, attended the monthly stormwater meeting. This group is mostly for sharing information, but is another example of how we are cooperating with other entities, including White Township, in carrying out our duties. At that meeting, Kyle brought it up today, brought us up to date on the rain barrel project, which he secured Britain Grant funding for. And finally, Nicole Dunn and I attended a meeting of the Executive Committee of IACT. We are beginning a process of reassessing how we approach the kinds of events that IACT was created to address. In the meantime, in advance of IUP's homecoming, we are planning an all stakeholders meeting for the end of September. This group is yet another example of how we're working together with County White Township, and in this case, IUP, for the benefit of the community. A collaborative team.
Yeah, fiasco at IU Paddy's.
Seven years ago. Down on Seventh at the old.
There was a big melee in the street there. That made it onto the, onto the television news.
Yes, I wanna follow up, Ben talked about the third Thursday and how it's focusing on IUP coming back to school. In the fire department, we have a live in program out at our west station, and because of the pandemic, we were unable to go and recruit because kids were, you know, weren't in classrooms. So normally, we have six or seven, we have two right now. So we're gonna try to get together at the third Thursday to help maybe recruit some students that might be interested in that program. So if you know of anybody, please let us know.
Do you have any information, like, maybe email to me?
Yeah, when we have it on our website too, yeah, yeah, yep. That's it.
Business to come before us? Motion to adjourn.
Just wanted to suggest two social things, when we brought up the Twisted Jimmy's, there were people that were confused as to whether or not they were trying to cater to IUP students or family students. So I reached out to them, and she was a little surprised and clarifying, you know, wow, we didn't even realize that with open containers, we were, you know, including families. So I, I suggested that maybe they get some IUP students to run the carnival games. So they're working on that, and I offered to volunteer some time to help them out, I don't know if anybody else is affiliated with them, but. Was having a back to school carnival event, but they also requested the open container, which was very contradictory, which.
September third.
Little bit, so they were very welcoming to understanding that when I hear back to school carnival event, I wanna take my kid kids. And I wasn't prepared to see IUP students doing what IUP students sometimes can do at Twisted Jimmy's. So I said, you know, you might wanna clarify that, and maybe incorporate some of the students to run some carnival type of games, you know, and, and put it all together. So I'm gonna follow up with them, cause she was gonna take that to a couple of other people. And then also the senior center, I talked to them, and they asked me to mention that there is a countywide senior citizen art show, that they could submit anything. And I'll get back to you with the date, that's sometime in Sep- September, so I like fun. If anybody's interested in passing that along to their senior citizen friends.
Are here.
Show, Peter?
Now, we did have a motion to adjourn, we held off a second. All right. Thank you all.
Yesterday.
Hey.
No, it's wonderful, I was gonna put on our new business, but it wasn't, you know, relevant.